Roll call. President. President. Here. All right. We do have a call. Uh, at this time, uh, Mark.
Deals over a thousand dollars. For the month of April. The fabric clean for the chemicals is two thousand one hundred and ninety-six dollars and forty-four cents. Pineboard, sand and gravel, asphalt is three thousand twenty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents. Scott petroleum for the fuel is three thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars and eighty-four cents. Cleveland last company for the testing is two thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars. Uh, Clark's mosquito control for mosquito was four thousand one hundred and one dollars and twenty-two cents. Arvel Gearing Junior for replacing a water pump was one thousand four hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixty cents. Two by accounting for the hook keeping service was thousand nine hundred and eight dollars. Get rid of it for the commercial garbage was five thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars. And get rid of it for residential garbage with fifteen thousand sixty-seven dollars. For a total of forty thousand four hundred and forty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents.
All right, thank you, Mark.
To the general fund financial. The general funds took in seventy-four thousand sixty-two dollars and ninety-four cents. It incurred expenses of a hundred and twenty-six thousand ninety dollars and eighty-nine cents. For a fifty-two thousand twenty-seven dollars and ninety-five cent loss. Fifty-two thousand and twenty-seven dollars and ninety-five cents. Now of that, the fire truck repair bill was twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. For thirty thousand for the fire truck. And we have not collected our franchise tax fees yet for the first quarter. They usually come in late and we did not receive them yet, so that's another issue. Well, you know, with the franchise tax, you would have been about to give them.
But I didn't get, no, that, uh, what was it, was it more than?
Yes, yeah, we moved, but that's not. That's not, uh, just moving from one town.
Yeah, okay.
Um, the street fund. The street fund took in seventeen thousand sixty-seven dollars and sixteen cents. It had operating expenses of sixteen thousand three hundred and sixty-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents. For a seven hundred dollars and forty-eight cent profit. The water funds took in twenty-two thousand three hundred and eighty dollars and thirty-eight cents. It had operating expenses of fifteen thousand two hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixty-seven cents. From operating income of seven thousand ninety-six dollars and seventy-one cents. We had depreciation expense of four thousand twenty-six dollars and fifty-nine cents. For a net income of three thousand seventy dollars and twelve cents. The sewer funds took in forty-five thousand six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents. It operating expenses of thirty-one thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents. From operating income of fourteen thousand sixty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents. It had depreciation of seven thousand twenty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents. For a net income of seven thousand forty-one dollars and fifty-four cents.
Do you have any questions?
I said, do you have, you accepted bills over a thousand dollars a minute and financial statement?
Did you move the property second? I was gonna say, let me know by saying I.
Ah.
Okay, I was having motion affair. Okay, the next thing on the agenda. Is the non-residential city attorney contract and salary. I think we discussed some of that in our session. Yeah. Yeah, okay.
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't have a thousand dollars, who is talking to me?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, let me get this straight, is this straight that he's supposed to do the bonds, like we give a bond, like the one Charles spent today? We pay them for five thousand something, he's supposed to do all that kind of stuff with one bound?
A lot of things, he does all of them.
Is that, is that, is that, I'm just asking, but that's what I was told, I'm just trying to make sure. That's all.
That's not for all services.
Why?
Yeah, all the services for the city.
Is that right, Mr.?
Well, I'm not in the board yet, so, uh, he accepts, um, standing.
Can I get a motion?
I'm gonna read, I'm gonna check the agenda, I'm gonna be checking off the second. Second.
You're moving the property second? Are those in favor?
You wanna call it off?
You call it off?
Councilperson Ray. Councilperson Jordan. Councilperson Esther.
Yeah.
Councilperson Stevenson. Councilperson Harway.
Yay.
Councilperson Ross.
Yes.
Well, you made the vote this time. All right. Motion is care, thank you. Yeah. Do two of them.
Yes, we saw three. One asked.
Yeah.
Motion care.
Motion care. All right, uh, now my moment. Uh, the infrastructure. Grant application that we had with the, uh, Arkansas, Arkansas Department of Highway and Transportation. Was submitted on April the thirtieth, two thousand fifteen. Now this grant is in partnership with the school district to provide safe transportation off the sidewalks to the school. So, very thick document here, but it's already been, been turned in. Now, uh.
I have a question.
Yes.
When are we supposed to hear back from their time plan?
Uh, well, Miss Ford, you could answer that, so, it's a timeframe on it, I just don't know it, ma'am. But I'll find it out for you and get it for you. All right, thank you. Now, on the, uh, summer food program. Uh, we have applied for a summer food program to feed a hundred and fifty kids for breakfast and lunch. Uh, the submission date for this application is made at till two thousand fifteen. If we are approved, the grant starts, uh, June the fourteenth and end August the fifteenth. And the grant is coming from the Department of Human Services at the state level. So hopefully. And the reason I applied for this is because we have so many working moms in this town, there's a lot of working moms between different places that hire women. And then with the, uh, the local, uh, uh, people that work with, with individuals at home and so forth. So this will give them opportunity. You know, they don't have to rush and try to cook.
Amen.
You see, we got, we got breakfast going, and then we got lunch. And then when the parents come home, they get to prepare them, prepare their last meal, so. I really like this program.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Uh, if it's approved, where would it be held?
Well, we're looking at two, two spots. There's a possibility that it could be held at the Hummer. And then, uh, according to the contract that, uh, the Baptist Convention have with this, this, uh, this Jordan. But there's a possibility that, uh, you know, if they, if they can do it, they, they say we can hold it away.
Who's actually a minister?
Uh?
Who's actually a minister?
DHS.
I'm not, I know who.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the city of Derrimah. The city of Derrimah.
The city of Derrimah.
Yeah. Yeah, the city of Derrimah. You know, I've been to training. Of course, I'm not gonna work in the program, but I've been to training. Gordon had been to training. We sent in three more people for the last training on the thirteenth. Well, we got a trainer, uh, coming out of Little Rock. And then we got, uh, India, India Donald and, uh, Sharon Hawke. And then there's gonna be a lot more people cooking and so forth.
Who has oversight?
Uh?
Who has oversight?
Uh, Sharon Hawke.
The responsible agency to do that oversight?
Yeah, the city. Yeah. Yeah, city council. Yeah, city council. Yeah. So I thought it's a very good program. Uh, and the other one is that, uh, the Lachman Summer Activity Program for the youth. Which we had planned to to use club park for some basketball, uh. And then there's also some, some goals that the Hummer that can be used if we can, if we can strap up here with, uh, uh, industrial council. So we will be talking to them in the near future. Now however, I'm gonna be asking for donations to pull that off. You know, we, I don't know, we don't want this, we don't want that. But then somebody need to go in their pocket and try to help me out. Because I'm telling you right now, I want the program to keep these kids off the street, doing something, something fun to do. And I'm initially, I'm initially donating five hundred dollars to the park. And if I have to give some more, I will. So I'm gonna be asking different organizations, private donors or whatever, to try to help with this program. Because we need to do something for our kids. Okay?
Okay, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, we getting all the activities and everything, but don't you think we need to have a place set first?
For what now?
Should we have a place set first before we get these activities? Or where are we going, where you be going?
Well, you know, we got no problem, we got no problem with girl of power. But we're already talking about that, haven't we? About putting up the goal and so forth.
But the first, but the first one that you was talking about.
Yeah, well.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, well.
Should you have a, a set place before, you know, you might be approved and and say, well, we don't have anywhere to go, but you have all that time.
Well, we, we can all, so.
I know it's already, uh, some program that's over.
Okay. Okay. All right. Any more questions? Okay. Now, the next thing I have on here is we are behind in our, you know.
Yes, we are.
You know, I'm gonna have to say that part of that is due to the rain. Rain, rain, rain. We couldn't cut grass. But my thing is, is that a lot of people that clean up their area but refuse to do so. Because I got a building that I'm gonna work on this week.
Oh, Matt?
Yes, yes, sir.
I know we're paying the rent. I would like to get my place cleaned up.
Okay.
But I do not understand, did we don't get the sidearm more?
No, sir.
Well, we need to get busy on that, but I don't understand, you couldn't decide on the streets. And all of a sudden, you just pick up and go and leave a block of it.
Yeah, I noticed that.
We don't have, we have no direction.
I noticed that, yeah. Am I riding around looking?
We don't have.
Now why would you cut half of it and then pick up your more and go somewhere else? That really don't make any sense.
On the way here, I saw they had cut the streets, it ain't one block, they just did.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with that. Yes, sir.
I always said this was a complaint also.
Okay.
One twenty-four railroad street. The ditch in Alice got the, the ditch in front of our house needs taken.
Okay.
The side lot, lot on the side of our house need more. And a pile of wood, the height's up, but I tried to get it to be a roof.
Okay, I don't know.
That's got to be a drop off, but.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
And this is a serious problem that's been there for a couple of years.
Okay. What is, uh, where's fire? Not in here.
Not there.
Hand me that complaint. You'll get it in the morning. See, I told him, 'cause I get tired of trying to answer each one. That is his responsibility. All right. Now, so, abandoned houses. I've discussed it before. Then when we tried to do something with the house, we just hand down, let it hold and put it in. What did the citizens do? They called, what is that, AD what?
ADEQ.
ADEQ. And they called ADEQ, said we was burning down house. They rushed down here and done a little investigation, but what they found is that the house has caught a fire and burned. It wasn't the one that we was messing with. So she tried to write us up for four times during that. But then, uh, I went out there, the fire department reports, and then sent them in. And all those houses, like Reverend Crockett House, you know, it burned down on the, on the song. Charles Smith House, burned down on the song. We didn't have anything to do with it. See, now I know some of you burning limbs. And if we give a hole and put that stuff in, it shouldn't be any complaints. But for some reason, people want it. Always fire. It's something that is trying to be done. And it really don't make any sense.
Property always in the city, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, oh, yeah. That would be, yeah. And then abandoned car. I gave instructions to order some stickers. Like they have on that, uh, state police app. And to go and stick those cars. You got five days to move them. And if you don't move them within five days, then we gonna move them. And we gonna take them across the state. And then give them money to the city.
And they, they gonna come across it and take their property.
I tell you what, if you got cold enforcement, and we got cold enforcement. Yes, sir, you can go get it. Uh, give them a big fine where they can move it.
My niece had a brand new car, stayed on her brakes, wanting to drive one. And they came by and gave her one and done kick, it was brand new, it could not be parked on the grass. And we letting too much go in their lawn.
Yeah.
But my thing is, why make you clean up and this person over here got a bunch of junk and you just let him go?
Yeah, we have auditors to take care of it.
You got auditors in place?
Yes, sir. If you got auditors. They got auditors. Okay, well, they don't have to worry about that only, 'cause you gonna be in the wrong. You gonna be in the wrong, and I know it's happening every day, but it.
You don't have a law to, to make it wrong.
Really, we, I think we got one, real. It's like we got one for the bulldogs, and we got one for the horses.
We got auditors to clean them, but I don't think they're strong enough.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Man, I know, they can, they can do it, I seen it done.
We have a new city council, I like to look at those. And we gotta sit in private, have a review, and give us some advice.
And if they not strong enough, you can make them stronger.
These neighbors strong enough.
Cause.
You want your town to be.
We wanna be legal, but I don't care how nice a neighbor I am to you. But if I live next door to you, and you got a nice clean place, and I got a bunch of junk next door, I'm not treating you right.
That's right.
So I treat it right, you got.
And you go right down the highway to Portland with thirty-four hundred people and it's clean as a pin.
Oh, yes.
Everywhere.
Yes.
Everywhere except Derrimah.
That's right.
I traveled this state. I traveled this state. As chairman of the board, Arkansas Human Development Corporation, I go all over the state. And I told somebody, I think I told it to this, uh, I said, Derrimah is the next town.
Sure, yeah.
And I finished. Usually Hughes, Arkansas. But Hughes, Arkansas done cleaned up. And we still like that.
I don't think we got a problem cleaning that this one makes you be working right.
Well, anyway.
Well, we got a new attorney, and if my apartment's not right, then he can overlook them for us and make sure we legal. But it need to be some teeth put into this cleanup. And I've been saying it for twenty years, it need to be cleaned up.
Amen.
I don't want two or three cleaned up. Eight good women.
Yeah.
They was all out there.
But anyway, and, uh, I had the cold enforcement man order five hundred, I mean a hundred signs, they said, this property is condemned. And he gonna be stapling it on all these old houses. And now you will have so many days to get that house down or repaired. And if you can't do that, then we gonna stick a fine on first time, second time, third time. And then if you don't pay it, we gonna, we gonna. And we might need to order just to add to their water bill or something. But anyway. Anyway. All right, well now, let's look at the last thing that I have. And that is the grocery store. And, uh, the application that is coming from the, the Delta Commission over in, over in Mississippi. I think she got that application last week, so we gonna be filling it out. Try to get this eight hundred thousand dollars. We also been in contact with the Rockefeller Foundation. And he want me to come up and meet with him. He said they have some money for food justice.
They want you to meet with them.
Okay. I've been busy, but I'm gonna call him and set that up, and I'm going up and meet with the vice president. All right, now, when we get some money, there's two things that we gonna be looking at. IGA. Which is something that we never thought about before. But IGA is a good source of, uh, of collaborating. And try to get this thing rolling. That they can provide you food and everything, you just got to get the money for the bill, that's all. And also, did you know that General Dollar Store? It's up in the food business now. So I'm gonna be contacting them in the near future. Because they may, may wanna come down in this area to, to show off one of their stores. But anyway, we gonna be working towards it then. All right? Now, whole business. We gonna skip over the nursing home, 'cause we gonna discuss that in this, in this session. I don't see. Wait, mom. Oh, we might have to sit down in the morning. You got this idea hanging out. Just not myself. Have to sit down in the morning. All right. Now, here's another. City streets, holes and leaks. Cleaning of ditches and adders, and tremor trees hanging over streets. Bush all with sidearm and track holes. But we don't have a track hole. But we need a sidearm.
Yesterday.
Yesterday. So, Mark, I'm gonna get with you. See if we can find some money for that sidearm. Okay? All right, 'cause we need to get that. Because, you know, I told him, I said, well, now, if you can't cut over one side, can you go up in the yard and then you cut it on the other side?
We need a sidearm.
All right, real. All right. So, I'll meet with them two gentlemen in the morning. And because they supposed to be in here tonight. So I told them the last time y'all was bombarding me, and I couldn't say nothing. I said, need. All right. That's right.
And they were supposed to have at least three estimates.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you know, I told that man. See now, you gonna mess them up, I'm gonna start writing them up. I'm gonna start writing them up. That's what you supposed to do when they, gonna do what they supposed to. And they supposed to be in here too. Might write them up and knock them. All right, now, uh, new business.
I have one thing on who we're gonna, but it needs to be in this other session.
Okay. Okay. Anything on someone? Not all of them report. But you already gave it. Yeah, okay, I got it.
You got mine?
Okay, yeah, I got yours, anybody else have it?
That's my house, that's the problem.
That's, okay. The ditch is in front. And downside of mobile homes need spraying. At it, but. Yeah, okay, in the back.
I'm, I'm about.
Mobile home need sprayed. Okay. All right. Yes, ma'am.
Old infrastructure.
Yeah, whole street.
Old infrastructure.
More than that, probably about two.
Yeah.
The system is old. Some of them are not broken, some of them just rusted out. I do a constant patching. I do a constant patching.
Yeah, but see, they told me they had to. Well, the, the uh, backhoe was our information for two weeks. Now, we have another backhoe, don't we, Mark? I pass these on tomorrow. Yeah, right.
Last week, our Southern Department of Corrections and the Delta Region Unit invited, that was their twenty-fifth year in Durham. And they had invited the uh, city council and the chamber. And uh, we had some from the Chamber of Commerce, we had the mayor there. And also, the council gave a certificate to the four that was there that had been there for five to twenty-five years. And uh, so, they received a certificate from the city, and they sent a thank you card to give. And the mayor also told that he was gonna give a trophy and with their names on there. And the ones that been there is the ender of uh, Carolyn Kierko, uh, Jean Phillips Chuck and Kathy Gladden, and one from the key is uh, Hulala. And he said that he was gonna give a trophy. But uh, my suggestion, you give that trophy, they have a trophy.
Yeah, they have a place, yeah.
At A D C, at the Delta. And we can let it stay there.
Okay.
Because they've been there for twenty-five years, and uh, Delta been there twenty-five years. And that's a good thing, that they've been there for twenty-five years. And we know we use them all the time. And so, it's good that we have something here that's been around twenty-five years. And so, they gave, they sent a thank you card.
Alright, thank you, go ahead. And I'd like you to get with Mr. Britton, see if y'all come up with something. Especially if we can get a plaque and have their pictures or something on it. You can have pictures up there now, at the, at the unit. Of the twen- of the ones that is twenty-five.
They, they did taste them.
Okay, but I wa- I wa- I want to put that on that uh, on that trophy, yeah, alright. Anybody else? Alright. Someone?
No, we have nothing.
Yeah, nothing. Alright, time for public to come in.
I wrote this as long as my time to doubt, okay, on my walking back away.
Okay.
Lady and city council, thank you for letting me address the meeting. I would like to take this time to publicly thank Ms. Lang and the former city attorney, Mr. Gibson. For years ago, when my wife had a personal death against her, they drew up an injunction giving her the opportunity to remain a employee of the nursing home. My wife has sent the nursing home over half her patients, over the half patients that are in Durham Nursing Home. Uh, without their pool, with this injunction, it is possible she may have not been an employee of this facility. I have waited too long to publicly thank Ms. Gibson, who is not here anymore. But I would like to take this time to thank Ms. Lang uh, for her help to me and Dr. Gerger.
Alright, thank you. That's appropriate. Appreciate that. Alright, yes sir.
Alright, first of all, are you racist?
No sir.
And why did you throw off people's time? To me, that's a ra- racial remark, you know that? I'm offended by that.
But I, okay, the first thing I want to say is, I have always said that. Now, I didn't know that was a racist remark, but let me tell you, I apologize.
Uh, this is that way.
If I offended you.
You did.
Okay, well, I apologize.
Well, you shouldn't say that word.
I'm saying, I've been friends with you for a long time.
But you don't say, I mean, that was.
Then I apologize. And I'm apologizing again, but.
Okay, but you shouldn't even say that word anymore.
Didn't I tell you that's what I have always said? I'm from old school.
That's not right. I mean, what I used to do, I mean, you know, you.
I'm not racist, man, you know, I've been friends with you a long time.
I know that, but I don't know what I'm saying, it's wrong, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I don't, well, he said in Chinatown all the time.
What'd you say?
I, it, it's racist, it's slant.
Okay, I'm gonna look it up.
You can't, also they, by alphabet, A through Z, they have every racist name and remark. All you have to do is turn them off. My brother was down there, I was pretty, I was very patient and bothered to do. So you won't make that statement.
Yeah, okay, but thank you, I should appreciate that. Yes sir.
I do a fight when I was here, people call me that, I don't like that, so.
You know.
Yeah, I mean.
Times are changing.
I agree.
Being politically correct, today is not what it were yesterday. Because I made a mistake and I said, you know, I'm like, if a child was having a child, you said retarded.
Right, I agree, right.
And cost his time. I said, and I'm not taking up for the mayor, but after I saw the headlines in the newspaper, then I remember, I heard older white and blacks used to use that term.
It's not his fault. It went across the board to Chinatown, to Whiteboard. As a mayor, he represents the town in all of the. When he is part of the town, he is not representing us. As a mayor, he should have that insight, never to have created some position he did without police officers. Especially in the time that Ferguson Missouri has going on right now. That was ridiculous. You ought to have resigned those staff. It's not the Durham people that are the problem with that, it's out of town people. This media sucks on stuff like that.
I can't answer, you don't have to answer.
I'd love to.
But you know what? One week they had who can all through the newspaper.
Yes.
Okay. Same newspaper. My grandson was with a basketball team up there. That same newspaper. They took the time and they put every child, name in their first name and last name. And when they got to my grandson, he said, Charles. But matter of fact.
Hey, he talking, he talking.
No, but I'm, you talking about the media. And I think it was done on purpose. I have the same. And the people. The same media you talking about. The same media.
If you're a public mayor, you do not get up and have a problem.
It's not right, it's not right if he do it. It's not right if I do it, and it's not right if you do it.
You know what's not acceptable you put in the.
Hey, hey, remove those, man.
Remove them.
But if you don't give me my clothes removed.
He resisted arrest, why can't you?
And Mr. McCracken, ain't you the one racist? Don't leave Facebook comments you had up on here about uh, black people and stuff. You break us first in mouth. No, no, we got him, we got him. Yeah, we got.
Philip, you have something you want to say?
Yes, I do.
Yeah.
I'm black. I don't care who called me black. It's not gonna make me mad. Because I'm black. Now, I've been doing here all this life.
I can't say what I want to because I'm white and I'm in Durham.
That's right.
I know, that's why I'm closing my mouth.
And I'm black.
Well, close the mouth now.
I've been doing here all this life, my mother.
Yeah, that's the word we use, we're not trying to.
But that ain't what I got to talk about. I said, every. Every head need to be at these meetings. Because what I got to bring up, the mayor and the council cannot answer. When I get ready to cut my water, I cut all the way down. And something going on wrong. I don't mention to the mayor, but it's not his job. It's Spire's job. He need to be at these meetings. Or the chief need to be here. It, it, it ought to be so, they got to be here to be, once a month. If you owe a, a pavilion, whatever you call it, you need to be at the meetings. Because certain questions, the mayor and the council cannot answer, but it's their job to answer. Just like, I want to, I got a one-seater truck, and I want to know, uh, could I ride my baby in her seat? I had to call to the state police to find out, could I ride in it? They been telling me, oh, he got to get a two-car seat, that's a story. Long as you got a baby seated, then you can ride it.
Alright, okay.
I called the state trooper office and found it out. So, a lot of stuff, they, the people need to be here, Ma should have been here. Spire should have been here, and the chief police need to be at all these meetings, every month. And uh, 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 Tony, uh, what's your name, man?
Tony E.
Tony E, you know, I know you well.
I know him myself.
And I, I wouldn't say nothing to honey, but I'm black.
But you know, what you said, it's a thing to me.
I've always said that all my life. Yes ma'am, say it again.
Yes, please. Okay, this is the only thing that I don't understand. That they calls uh, niggas, that we are negro. They may not do it to our face, they do it behind our back. So why are they so defending? Because they get called, and they know better than we are, and we know better than they are. How we actually be calling? Because we are negro, we are black, but they get called. They lie to say they don't.
Okay, since growing up, they call us niggas, they call us boys, they call me a boy. They're like, what are you doing, boy?
Now, they don't want to be called.
Everybody knows they create a problem. Why you gonna get mad because they said, boy? I call you a boy, I call anybody you know, boy. That's gonna make me, some people get offended out there because people call them boys. They call, you can get offended, I call them, but I don't care, I know who I am. Because nobody, one thing I need to say, everybody in here, we need to start working together instead of arguing.
And all it's doing is making Durham look bad.
Yes, yes ma'am. Hey, do you want to say something?
Yeah, we need some prayer, I heard tonight, we got Mr. Hardaway. You need to say a prayer for us. Get a prayer band.
We gonna be alright.
I appreciate it, thank you.
At least you can go to pray.
That broken place out on Little House.
Okay.
I thank you very much.
Alright, thank you, ma'am. Mr. Brown. Yes sir, you know, yeah, go ahead.
The city does. And they each have, they have Class A, they have, which is the dressing, they have their westerns. They all have B B U, they all have, I mean, with the captain and the food. They have uh, the shirts, the embroidered shirts.
I'm in a uniform. I've been here. Without buying my own uniform, told the city person, maybe four or five. Some of them, some still we buy what I said. Books still we buy ourself.
What do you get, one a year?
One a year. Not one a year. Some of us have the same uniform since we've been here. Like I say, sometimes we'll buy our own, sometimes since we bought some, sometimes we buy our own too.
I think it's more than buying their own. I know, I know years ago, I know years ago, they used to have a, they used to have a uh, they used to get a.
Allowance.
Allowance, useful allowance, but they cut that, it's been a long time. So, all of the city does buy, they don't buy.
You break your heart.
Yes sir.
Got a couple remarks. And some people already said it, basically, we gotta get past all this petty stuff. Everybody here, if you're determined to do this, that what have or not, in some manner, we gotta get past that. And just like you said, it's bad advertisement for us whenever we run ourselves down.
Thank you.
Uh, because people outside don't know what's going on really, except what you read in the paper. We just got to get past all this little petty stuff.
Yes ma'am.
We were talking earlier about our city ordinances, and some of you don't, aren't aware of what they are. But in my re- in my remembrance, I think we have an ordinance about pit bulls in Durham. And they weren't allowed here. And Mr. Robinson, you have one down the street from you.
You made my point. The city ordinance need to be revised.
My thinking is, I just bought into this neighborhood again. The dog that I'm talking about has a fence in for his yard. And I don't understand why I would have to put up a fence for their dog, to keep it out of my yard. I have some, I have some elderly people that walk, try to walk my neighborhood. They cannot walk Petticord because of another house that has big dogs. So they've been coming down Speedway. When they would rather walk down their, their regular city street with sidewalks. These pit bulls are getting out to these elderly people or handicapped people. I've called, the dog gets picked up, by the end of the day, the dog's back. They will go and pick this dog back up, they'll chain it up for a little while. You can't get to the homeowner's door because they chained it up under the carport where the dog leash can get to the front door. So you can't be neighborly and say, look lady, I'm having a problem with your dogs. You know, I'm not a bad neighbor, I've lived on Petticord Street, I've lived in Durham my whole life. Nobody in this room can say they've had hard trouble with me. But you know, if we're gonna set these ordinances outside, right, right by this edge of town, there's a sign up there, pit bull puppies for sale. Watch it, it's there, it's been there for months. Months, they walk these dogs constantly. Not just black guys, white guys, everybody has one of these dogs. And if, I'm telling you, if it bites one of my grandson, like I told the dog catcher, like I told the dog catcher, I'm going after the owner of the dog, I'm going after the dog catcher, the code enforcement, and it's coming all the way up to you there.
We're gonna deal with that because I had experience with a dog, I walked through my neighbor's yard. And the big dog, he was tired, but I walked too close. And that dog just stood up and kicked me in my chest, and almost knocked me down.
And some of these people have their dogs paint, you know, tied to the plant, but it can reach the sidewalk. It can reach the sidewalk, you know, and I'm not scared of dogs, but pit bulls that are aggressive toward me. Yes, because the other loose dog, he's gonna be the pack leader. And he gets these other mongrels that are running around the town, up behind him, and he's got him a big pack. We've got to do something with these dogs.
I didn't go over that bad, we work on that. Mr. Brown. Yes.
Um, there was, the ordinance was reworded, reworked. Um, I think it was the middle of last. There was, the ordinance was reworded, reworked, um, I think it was the middle of last year, mid-year of last year. And it wasn't, I mean, yes, the pits, pit mixes in the town are a big problem, but as I said before, it's the owners as much as the dogs. And there for a little while, there was a little bit of improvement by making the owners be responsible. But you've got, for every walk, you've got anywhere from five to fifteen dogs. And nobody claims responsibility for them, if they think they're gonna get in trouble. And that's the biggest problem, you, you've got people being irresponsible. And just like you're saying, when you've got one on a chain, the perimeter of that chain, that's his territory. And if you get too close, you're taking your chances.
Yeah.
But part of that ordinance is to have a safely enclosed fence or pin, if you're not keeping it inside. And it's, I think it comes down to enforcement and making people be responsible.
Okay, thank you. So that's about it?
No, no.
You got all y'all.
Ain't talking about pit bulls. I had one come in my yard and kill my little dog, about that tall, less than three pounds, one bite, in my yard. And I'm not gonna ask you to do anything, but I'm gonna handle mine myself. Because three weeks from now, we bring this up, you're gonna get the same answer, we gonna do something about it. I'm gonna handle mine myself. Now, if y'all wanna know how to get rid of a pit bull, give me a ring, I'll tell you. There, look, we got a policeman over here, one's a male. I'll bet you he knows wherever dog, ever cat, ever bird, ever snake, in Durham. And done it for years. Unless you put some teeth in pit bulls, you're not gonna solve anything.
Okay.
We'll come back a month from now, you still be saying the same thing.
Okay.
But I'll take it with your mind.
Okay. Well, I know. Been there all this time. But we decided now. Got some things we need to put in place, huh? Yeah. Got some things we need to put in place, and. So we post on that tonight. And uh, we'll be having a, another call meet. I'm sorry, I know y'all looking disappointed.
Um, I moved that, um, Ms. Hope Witten, she received a Arkansas District Court Clerk certification. And uh, we gonna raise her pay to the standard or whatever. Certified pay.
Alright, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, they moving in proper second? All of those, if they would have been known by saying aye? Alright, I said motion is carried. And bid you goodnight. Little bit, John, all the babies that be known by saying aye? Do you have something you wanna say?
Ms. Jones had asked something about some help for the.
Martha, Martha, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah.
Katie's giving you the floor, if you had something you wanted to bring up. She said, no, not tonight, uh-uh, not tonight, Kate.
I saw movement that we had done.
Yeah, we all ready, John, thank you.